We're going to go ahead and move on to item number four. Announcements and presentations. The first one will be receive update on COVID-19 response efforts. That will be done by Jennifer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. We're just going to pull up the presentation quickly. My name is Jennifer Dianos, Assistant to the City Manager, and I'm here this evening on behalf of our Emergency Operations Center Public Information Team. And I'm here to provide an update to you, including our Oh, my clicker isn't working here. Here we go. Including our local statistics, our status on the blueprint for a safer economy, a reminder of safer holidays and travel, and I will provide some information on how our city team has modified our services to support our community. Of course, I'll be available for questions at the conclusion of the presentation. And we'll start here with the local statistics. So in San Bruno, there are a total of 770 positive COVID-19 cases as of last Friday, December 4th. The last report to council included an update of 639 cases in San Bruno. The San Mateo County Health Data Dashboard here on the screen shows that as of December 7th, there were 16,371 COVID cases in our county and a total of 177 deaths. These statistics are all pulled from the San Mateo County Health website, and that is at smchealth.org. It's also linked on the screen for you. And this update, I've also included hospital data as it has been talked a lot about recently and has piqued many people's interest, given the recent actions taken by the state, which I'll go over briefly over the next few slides. And as you can see on the screen, it is a little hard to see just because data is so small. But the information is as of December 7th, and it shows that we're currently at 84 COVID patients in the county and the hospital. And with that, about 60 beds of the ICU units are in use and zero of the surge beds are in use. Our county remains in the widespread or the purple tier on the blueprint for a safer economy, similar to many or I guess I should say most counties in the state. Our adjusted case rate you can see here is 11.6, and anything over seven remains in the purple tier. And you'll notice on the screen the 34.9% ICU availability in our county, and that correlates to what we just looked at. Governor Newsom just last week announced regions throughout the state and criteria related to availability of ICU beds triggering a stay-at-home order. On the screen, you could see San Mateo County falls in the Bay Area region, along with Alameda, Contra Costa, Marin, Monterey, Napa, San Francisco, Santa Clara, Santa Cruz, Solano, and Sonoma Counties. Our region is one of the very few that did not initially fall under a stay-at-home order. However, several of our neighboring agencies initiated their own stay-at-home order early. San Mateo County did not. San Mateo County Health Officer Scott Morrow issued a statement yesterday, December 7th, with more information on why he did not join other health officials in this action. I recommend that you read the statement in its entirety. It is available on the San Mateo County Health Department website, and that's at smchealth.org. On the screen here, I took the excerpt from the end of the statement as a reminder to our community about the importance of simple and now familiar actions that we can and should all take to reduce the spread of COVID. In the interest of time, I'm not going to read the entire excerpt aloud, but it is important to note that Dr. Morrow emphasizes no gathering, the importance of the use of face covering, social distancing, and to not move around, meaning to try to stay at home to avoid unessential travel and activities. And there is a link at the bottom of this slide that will take you directly to the statement to read more. The state also announced the launch of California Notify, which helps make connections of possible exposures to COVID-19. The application will launch later this week, and if you're interested in learning more, you can visit the state's website to link directly to the application, and that's at Now, before the Thanksgiving holiday, a guidance was issued regarding safer holidays. The guidance still stands, but I just want to remind everyone that things continue to evolve as we continue our way into the winter season. So please keep in mind that the health officer statements and updates are all made available to the public. In the meantime, we continue with the recommendation to keep it safe, short, small, and stable to protect you, your family, and our community. Nonessential travel and holiday vacations are not recommended, and you should not travel if you're sick, if you're with someone who's sick, or if someone in your household is sick. If you travel for urgent matters, it is recommended that you self-quarantine for 14 days. Next, I have a few slides specific to San Bruno and our community, and I represent the Emergency Operations Center Public Information Team. I know firsthand how much has changed in our delivery of services as a city, so this is specific to our programming. But last week, we had a special honor to host Santa in our very own jingle around the block. Our firefighters took the opportunity to drive Santa around our community in the San Bruno Fire Truck, and the magic really brought out a lot of residents and smiling faces. And we thank Santa for that opportunity to help spread joy in our community. But I'm happy to deliver more good news about Santa. Our San Bruno elves continue to help him by helping with the Santa hotline and Santa letters. Our community services team has put together a program, this amongst many others, that you can find on our website at sanbruno.ca.gov. It allows your family to still enjoy the great services from home and celebrate the season. And another fun event is our new holiday light map here out in San Bruno. This is an opportunity to decorate your house to spread happiness, or request the map and take a ride around town to see all the special holiday decor. Either way, it's a safer way to celebrate the season from afar. Our Public Information Team is finalizing a citywide mailer that will be out soon. This is a little bit of a teaser of the front page here, but it will include recreation and library programming for the upcoming season, as well as an update on the new Recreation and Aquatic Center project. Our city services, while most offices are closed, are still available by appointment or through remote connection, for example, like by phone or online. This is really a mailer that serves as a resource to our community to stay current on our activities during these modified times. And so stay tuned, that will be mailed out shortly. And lastly, we all encourage everyone to shop local, support our local businesses. They are really the heart of our community, and by supporting them, you can help save jobs and businesses. Many small businesses do not have an online presence, especially in San Bruno, so that doesn't mean that they are closed. It's important that you call ahead and find out business hours or modifications and make a safe visit with a mask and socially distanced. And tonight, I have kept it short and sweet. That concludes my presentation. I do remind, I want to remind everyone to sign up for SFC Alert. It's our emergency notification and to follow our official City Account on social media. I do want to take a second to thank all of my team members on the EOC Public Information Team. This year has been quite an experience for all of us, and I do appreciate everyone's hard work and dedication and amazing skills. On behalf of our team, we do wish everyone a warm, safe, and loving holiday season and a big cheer for the New Year. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Are there any questions from colleagues? Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Jennifer, always just thank you so much for an excellent presentation. You're extremely thorough. One of the questions I've asked, and I've asked a few people, and I haven't really gotten a con, an on it, or an answer that I think anybody knows, but what's the difference between the ICU beds and ICU surge beds? Does anybody know? I was thinking it might have to do with surgical ICU beds, because that's a number I continue to monitor, and I think we as a, as a city and as a county should really monitor. And when we start looking at numbers where we drop down to eight available ICU beds, that's getting pretty concerning. And so I hope those who are listening tonight really take this serious and stay away from groups and really the loved ones and family members. But if anybody has that answer, and we may not, and that's okay too, but we're definitely dropping down low.
Sure. Councilmember Davis, Javon Brogan, I'll answer that for you. So it's a good question, and we looked into that earlier this week. So ICU surge beds are additional ICU beds that can be tilted up and made available. And so the county does have additional ICU beds that are available and ready to serve this county. And one of the questions we had is when they do the ICU bed statistic on the county's website, are they actually including the surge bed capacity? We believe they are, because we sort of triangulated it earlier this week. And so there are available beds, ICU beds in the county when you include those surge beds.
Thank you so much.
Okay, seeing no other questions, we'll go ahead and move on to the agenda to item 4B. This is a presentation and recognition of outgoing Councilmember Laura Davis. And again, it's very unique on Zoom, obviously, as we proceed further. So what I'm going to ask is if council members can turn their cameras off, with the exception of Councilmember Davis. Thank you. And what I'd like to do is call upon a few individuals that we have here. And first, I'd like from Jackie Spear's office to call on Katrina, and have the Zoom floor is yours.
Certainly, it's not Jackie Spear. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor Medina, Councilmembers, staff. It's wonderful to be with here, to be with you tonight, and I wish we could meet in person, as usual that we can't. Laura, I am here on behalf of Congresswoman Spear to thank you for your service on the council, for the residents of San Bruno. And the Congresswoman entered extended remarks into the Congressional Record. I'm going to deliver this to you. We wanted to have it here on the video so that you could see it. The Congressional Record, of course, is the official history of Congress, so when your kids grow up and want to look you up in the Congressional Records, they will find this document. I'm not going to read the entirety of the document because it's too long, but please allow me to just read a few paragraphs of it. Madam Speaker, I rise today to recognize Laura Davis upon her retirement from the San Bruno City Council after three years of service. Serving on a council of a small city is never easy, but doing so during the global pandemic not seen in a century is almost unimaginable. Yet Laura and her colleagues used and created tools and mechanisms that made San Bruno residents as safe and supported as possible. Laura's hard work and dedication are a testament to her commitment to her community. Then it goes through several things that you have accomplished on the, on the council. I'm going to jump ahead. Laura also isn't a newcomer to public service. Prior to the council, she served on the San Bruno Crime Prevention Committee and on Parks and Recreation Commission. She served on the committee that planned the spectacular Centennial celebrating the San Bruno in 2014, three years before she was elected to the council. An avid outdoors and sports enthusiast, she has coached numerous softball, basketball, and soccer teams in San Bruno. She founded Friends Helping Friends through St. Roberts Parish and raised $100,000 to help those in need of medical treatment with their expenses. After Laura survived her own battle with cancer, she served as a committee member of a Relay for Life fundraiser, and she organized a community superhero day for two boys fighting cancer. It is obvious from these activities that Laura Davis deeply cares about others and has a profound desire to improve their lives. Madam Speaker and members, please join me in honoring Laura Davis for her service to the San Bruno residents. We are very fortunate to have such a talented and caring woman as a community leader who will undoubtedly stay active and engaged. Thank you for your service, Laura.
Thank you so much, Katrina. That was very, very touching. I appreciate that, and thank you to Congressman Jackie Spear as well.
Absolutely. I love that. Pass that on. Thank you.
And Katrina, thank the Congresswoman for all her work and effort and her representation of San Bruno. She's always been a friend to us, and we appreciate her service to what we do. And I know she's, has had a lot of work lately, so please pass on our, our love. Yes, our love, our best wishes for the holiday.
Very special relationship to the city of San Bruno, for sure.
Truly, and thank you again for being here.
Of course, my pleasure. Thank you.
Next, we have, I've been delivered a certificate of recognition from the Honorable Kevin Mullen of the 22nd District, Speaker Pro Tem in Sacramento, and it is addressed to the Honorable Laura Davis, Councilmember, City of San Bruno, in honor and recognize, the recognition of your three years of dedicated service to the residents of the City of San Bruno. During your service on the council, you helped navigate through some challenging times, and your leadership laid a strong foundation for the future. On behalf of the State of California, congratulations and best wishes to continued success on this day, the 8th day of December 2020, signed by Mr. Mullen. And I, we will get that to you. So we have that. And then like I, I'd like to now call upon, we have the supervisor, David Canepa, who is the Vice President of the Board, and he is here to say some comments. Supervisor, please.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Now Laura, I heard you're a big Dodgers fan, is that right?
You heard that wrong.
I heard, I heard you're a big Giants fan, but I just want to, first of all, I'm just delighted to be here and thanks to the council and thanks, thank you to Mr. Mayor for all you do. But Laura, I was looking at some of the things that you've done in such a short time, but you were on a lot of regional committees in those three years. So just thank you for your service. Thank you just for all you do. It's not easy. It's not easy. And people think it is, but I remember when I was on the City Council at Daly City, you carry that responsibility with you, and that, you know, sometimes those nights when you can't sleep, huh, Laura? So I'm sure your sleep is going to get a lot better, but on behalf of Supervisor Pine, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, in small token, Laura appreciation, we're going to present you with a resolution. All the best to you and your family, and thank you for your service. It's, it's much appreciated, Laura. Enjoy tonight and enjoy retirement from the council.
Thank you so much, Mr. Canepa. Appreciate that, Supervisor.
Thank you, Supervisor. Appreciate it, and thank you for your time, and have a good evening and happy holidays to you and your family. We also have from Dave Pine's office, Supervisor, First District, Dave Pine. We have Randy. Randy, please, and I do know that Supervisor Pine reached out to me, and I believe reached out to Councilmember Davis as well, so I will turn it over to Randy, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Councilmember Davis, I just wanted to echo the words of Supervisor Canepa and let you know that I will personally mail the resolution from the County of San Mateo to you. Thank you again for your service, especially during this year of COVID, which has asked extraordinary levels of service from all official officials. So again, thank you from San Mateo County.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate Dave Pine's support, the city, as well as Supervisor Canepa.
Thank you, Randy. Now for the public, if there are those that wish to speak on this item, on the recognition of Laura Davis, now would be the time to please put up your virtual hand. And I do know that we have some people, and City Clerk, if you're able to bring in the former Vice Mayor and City Councilmember, Ken Ibera first, if that's possible, and to bring him in. And again, Melissa will be timing the comments of three minutes, and Mr. Vice Mayor, Mr. Ibera.
Three minutes? That's all I get? Thank you. Thank you very much. And I wanted to really make it a point that I was present tonight. First of all, let me congratulate you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Salazar for your reelection, and also congratulations and welcome to the dais to Councilmember Tom Hamilton. But for Laura Davis, it's bittersweet, but I, on behalf of the small group of former elected officials of San Bruno, we welcome you to the club. You have displayed so much to this community. I've known you before you were on, on the council, and your family has been so involved in this community, and it's been a joy to know you and be your friend. And especially three years ago, when I, when I came off the council only to learn that you were, you were going to take the place up on the dais on the council, and so I was so pleased and honored to support you and see you involved. Laura, you've done so much for this community. Three years is, is enough for you because, you know, you've done so much more before, and I look forward to what your next venture is, because I'm, I'm sure the residents of San Bruno will benefit to you. Best to you, the family, hi to mom, and thanks again on behalf of the community.
Thank you, Ken. Next speaker, please.
Ken. Next, we have Jessica Martinucci. Just one moment while I bring you in.
Hello.
Hi, Jessica. Can you hear us? There you go.
I, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Perfect. I just want to congratulate Laura for all she's done, and a huge thank you. She obviously is one of my closest friends, but I have also served with her, doing things for the community, and I know her love for this city, and I know that she's going to also continue to do great things and serve her city from a different seat. But I just want to say, as a friend and someone that cares and loves, loves her, thank you from the bottom of my heart for serving. I know it's not easy, and you've always done it well, so thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Chris Gonzalez.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor Medina and Councilmembers, and Laura. It has been an honor and a pleasure to serve as your treasurer. Thank you for having the faith in me that allowed me to be a small part of your campaign team. I cherish the extra time spent together these last few years and our many years of friendship. You have put your heart and soul into last three years that you served this community, not only as a San Bruno Councilwoman, but on many subcommittees and boards. You truly represent the city with a heart. I want to thank you for being a leader with character and kindness while representing those of us in this great city of San Bruno that vote with their pen and not with misleading social media posts. You are our voice. The loudest people do not speak for all of us, and you recognized that and stayed true to you. It is now time for you to take some time for your family. You can enjoy it, knowing that you served your city and you served it well. In the words of the late Ruth Bader Ginsburg, "Cannot reign more true than when I think of you." Fight for the things that you care about, but do it in a way that will lead others to join you. Thank you again, Laura.
Thank you so much, Chris.
Thank you for your comments. City Clerk, I think we've gone through.
Yes, I believe we have.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to call upon some council members, and if I could start with Councilmember Medina, and I'm going to fade away.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Laura. I want to sincerely thank you and your, and your family for your dedicated service to our city. It takes a lot to be on the council, and I know you deeply care about our city, and it was even harder in this past pandemic year. So thank you. Enjoyed the time away. Wishing you and your family the very best. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Salazar. Vice Mayor Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Laura, we've known each other for quite some time, going back to our church. I know you were, I mean, you're practically legendary at St. Roberts, everything you've been involved in, all your involvement in the festival and all your involvement in youth sports around the city. And then, you know, when I got to Cappuccino, our paths clock crossed again, because of all of your time and talents that you dedicated to, to that environment. And then, and then we spent some time on the, on the Park and Rec Commission together. And, you know, again, it just, over all those experiences, it just helped to increase the, the level of respect I have for you and admiration. You're such a strong person, a great leader, and, you know, you know, what can I say? You've been fantastic. I think anyone who knows you knows, you know, how tough you are, how determined you are, what a hard worker you are. And I think what really shines through all of those things, though, is how big of a heart you have and how much affection you have for our community, and that really comes through in everything that you do. And, you know, we, we, you know, walked onto the dais in 2017 together, both of us from the Park and Rec Commission, and, you know, when, when you got elected, I knew you were going to be great on the council. I knew it. But honestly, I could not have asked for a better colleague over these past three years. Time and time again, I could always count on you to show up prepared, informed, and ready to be a leader. And, you know, I for one am going to definitely miss your, your partnership on the council. I'm going to miss the collaboration and all of the energy and positive, the positive energy that you brought to the council. So thank you so much for being there when we needed you, and I'm going to miss you.
Thank you so much, Michael.
Now for, for myself, I will tell you that we've known each other since being recreation leaders at San Bruno Parks and Rec, let me say, many moons ago. One thing was, is it wasn't, no fear of rolling up the sleeve, no fear of taking on something, trying something new, and saying, we'll find a way, and then making that happen. That happened even at, at Cappuccino with the fundraiser for Stephanie Harvgroth needing a bone marrow transplant, and it wasn't covered by insurance back then, and the leadership class and the school community came together to raise monies. And being on Crime Prevention Committee together at a period of time, so very much, you've always given and contributed in many ways. And even when you had your own challenge, I still saw the strength and the passion. And not only are you a fighter, but you're a survivor. And and during that time, many people would turn away or shelter or not have folks over, but you opened up your home, opened up your heart still to people as you battled your situation and never forgot. And I still, I don't wear the shirt, probably because I don't fit in it anymore, but I still have this shirt back from March 22nd, 2014, and it's San Bruno's Littlest Superheroes. It was for Batman and Harry Potter, two young children that were battling cancer, and yet you came up with this idea, seeing it in LA or somewhere, and brought a community together to have skits, have the Cappuccino baseball team involved, have the senior center involved, have this, the police involved, and it was something very special to see a community come together. And I think that's what you've always done, and that's what you do well. And I know darn well that you don't need to sit on the council in order to still be engaged. One of those things that I was criticized for, and maybe you unfortunately, was, my God, those two know each other too well, they're never going to be able to separate. Well, I will say in these last three years, it's probably been the most challenging for you and I personally, and I don't look forward to not having you on the council and your wisdom and your passion and your love, but I do look forward to us, again, having a great relationship, because as you and I both know, we are passionate people, we speak our mind candidly and frankly, and sometimes too much, and we do not always agree. So for those that thought there could not be separation, there truly was at times, and in more ways than one. But I can't speak more highly of an individual that gives of their time, that runs for office, and even in a time when you were not going to seek and even at a time when you were not going to seek reelection, you still gave a commitment and a love and a passion for the city. You are truly one who has a city with a heart, and you have always, from as long as I've known you. And so I'm appreciative and I'm thankful for all that you have done and all that you will continue to do. And I know if we need a volunteer for some project, we've just got to pick up the phone. So I know that. I did just see a hand go up. I'm going to call on this one, one person from the community, but this is going to be it, and then I'll finish it up and we'll move on. May I please, City Clerk, can you call on Mrs. Allen?
Yes. Anna Allen.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Laura, 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 Laura. Thank you, thank you so much for everything you've done for the community. On a personal level, I've known you since baseball, when our sons were five years old. And the how you you raised these boys and anybody you coached, honestly, like they were your own children and treated them as such. And I'm sure there are many of us that are grateful for for that. It's so needed in this community or in any community, and you just shine with kindness and love and sincerity. And I am really, really grateful for all you've done for my family, for the city, and for any other, you know, community that you've helped, which I'm sure you've done. I also want to thank your family. I'm sure that, you know, there were nights when you were away and, you know, they kind of carried on with, you know, maybe Jim at work as well. But it just shows the strength of your family and how you raised them, which is, you know, incredible. You've you've got an incredible family. You are just rooted here in this beautiful community. And, you know, I can't thank you enough, and I just wanted to express that. And the reason I'm raising my hand now is I couldn't get on, I wasn't signed in correctly. So I apologize for doing that or coming on so late. But again, thank you and your family.
Thank you so much, Anna.
And and very well said, Mrs. Allen, that it should be acknowledged to, you know, Jim's the nice, quiet one, and he probably has to deal with it, and so better him than me. But but at the same time, to Ryan and Sarah and Jim, much thanks. And to the rest of the family who has, you know, I think you've had, even when you go on vacation, you're still on duty. So I appreciate that. What what Mr. Davis delivered was a flower arrangement from us, and when I say us, the city council, from the city staff and from the city of San Bruno. And also in the box is a token of our appreciation and gift from, again, council, staff, and the community. And again, we thank you. We are sincerely appreciative for the years of service and the, I think, nearly, if I counted 50 meetings we've had this year or more. So with that, I will turn over to you, Councilmember Davis, for comments.
I I'm not, you know me, I'm not someone who has lost for words, but you just spilled water from the flowers on me. Those are very, very, very nice comments for those of you who spoke up. I do really appreciate all that that I heard tonight. You had me in tears, actually. You know, when I committed to run for city council three years ago, I had no idea what was ahead of me. Sure, I attended council meetings and followed city issues and spent 11 years in the Park and Rec Commission and a few years on the citizens' crime prevention back in my early twenties. But the experience these past few years has been very rewarding, challenging, and very emotional. You see, when I get involved in something, I give 110%. I really do care about things. I care about the decisions I make and fully understand how my vote affects the residents of San Bruno, their businesses, and even down to the city employees. I take the comments and the feedback to heart. You know, my family, and I thank my father, who taught me how to get involved and make a difference, very involved businessman in San Bruno, and he taught me how to work together as a team. He would, we would buy in bulk and sell to the businesses on San Mateo Avenue so they can then purchase items at a cheaper, a cheaper price. And so he he worked with his other merchants and fought on getting more parking because at the end of the day, we knew that parking was the most important thing to survive as a business. I continue to give back and I continue to appreciate the importance of making San Bruno better. I've seen good and I've seen bad, but I've never lost the faith in the city and the promises for the future. You know, I remember back the night of the San Bruno gas explosion, and I was there within, my husband and I were there within minutes of the, of that that night. And many people don't know this, but we actually came up upon a gentleman who had ran from the bottom of the hill for his life to the top of the hill. My husband is a firefighter, a paramedic, grabbed him right away. And that was Mr. Franco. And we were there before the fire department, and I started directing traffic because there are a bunch of idiots who thought that just blocking the streets and taking photos was what they needed to do instead of letting the fire department in. And and at that time, I thought, oh, my God, you know, the people of San Bruno, and there are so many friends and loved ones that live down in that community and that were affected by that. You know, knowing who's there and knowing who who survived, and then the rebuilding part of it. And I think back to how much that the city got involved with in trying to rebuild that community and, you know, somebody, so many opinions and and decisions and, you know, what can we do? And how do we, how do we give back to that, the community? And how do we make sure that they feel the love? And and in fairness, that time, you know, really took a lot away from the city of San Bruno. You know, we could barely just stay abreast of what we needed to get done. And so in some areas, we are behind the times, and in some areas, you know, there are things that other cities have done. And so when I get questioned about stuff, I think about, you know, our city and how effective we were and that, at the end of the day, the staff has worked really hard, tirelessly, many hours, to work hard for San Bruno and make a difference and really and choose the right, the right path to follow and the right things that are important. And we as a council do that as well. You know, we are a dedicated council, and and we all come with different backgrounds and opinions and priorities. You know, I remember, in fact, I remember Mayor Medina running for council and, you know, thinking how the importance of newspaper racks on San Mateo Avenue. And then you get onto the council and you realize you get about 1,000 things that are just as important or more important, 1,000 things that are more reaching to your community because you can only do so much. I've learned in my, in my, my career that, you know, you can't, you can't tackle it all. You know, you prioritize your list and you start addressing each one of your items at the very top, and you complete it fully and fully and succinctly. You know, we as a city has had to focus on many different things, but we've had the opportunity, and I've had the opportunity, to work with amazing and dedicated leaders, from our city managers to city attorney and many department heads. I'm so constantly impressed by their dedication and their commitment to San Bruno. You know, you really truly never understand the position that we take and the and the council, as Supervisor Canepa said, sleepless nights, and that's a true statement. You know, we have legalities and issues that we can't share. We have legal issues that force us to make decisions we know residents do not support. Nobody cares for rate increase, but we understand the importance of those, and yet we are all members paying my water bill as well. We know the importance of the big picture and the cost to replace infrastructure. We do have, I do, I don't, I'm sure I can vouch for the most of the council members, the sleepless nights. You know, a council meeting ends at midnight and you're still there, wide awake at 2:00 AM with an 8:00 AM presentation the next morning to a VP. And that's not uncommon for me. And so it's challenging. You know, we spend weekends preparing for council meetings. You know, you've got a 300, 500-page packet, you got to go through it, and you got to ask a question, you got to do the research. So we all give back and we are all dedicated. And what's hard as a council person is that you've got to then read the social media and try to stay on top of that. And when you read the social media, you see the comments that really aren't based on facts or based on hearsay or based on oppression. But what I also understand, it's extremely challenging for the average resident to really understand because there is so much coming at us. And so, you know, it's, I was told at the very beginning, as a council member, you're probably better off staying off social media. There are times when it's so hurtful, you need to, and you come back around and you, you know, try to stay abreast of it, and you want to know what the issues are, and you want to make sure that you can hear the things that are happening and make sure we can bring them forward. So I always appreciate those who call in or maybe send an email and just really succinctly give their support and understanding and ask us in a nice way to try to address something or focus on an area that maybe we're not seeing. And it's always amazing to get the email responses back from a resident who appreciates what you've done, the visit that you've had at their home and and that you follow through with staff and try to escalate their issues if they felt like they were hurt or that we can help resolve an issue. And so to all my council members, I know we care about San Bruno. We, we all want what's better, we want San Bruno to be better tomorrow than it is today. Every council, like I said, brings your own experience and knowledge. Our priorities might be different, but hopefully we can all come together and really agree in those top priorities. And so as a, as a team, I know that this council can continue working together. And I think Tom Hamilton, soon to be councilmember Hamilton, said it best in one of our council meetings, that we're all probably there about 90%. We agree on everything. And it's that 10% that we get stuck in the weeds and we, it really kind of can separate us. So I hope that, you know, we can really focus on the 90% that we all agree on and know that those are the things that we should, to do, to work together to make San Bruno better. As Councilmember Medina will say, he likes to see all of us get to a 5-0 vote, and I appreciate him trying to always work together as a team. And so thank you for that. Councilmember Salazar, it's been a pleasure working with you. You are someone that is sometimes the quiet one, but just those quiet ones that are listening intently. And your collaboration with you on many different items has been so supportive. Mayor Medina, we do, we do butt heads, and, you know, I have strong opinions and I will be honest, we may not always agree, and times we do agree. And and so it's, 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 it will be interesting to move forward with not having these battles that we don't have to sit and get frustrated with each other. You have passion and I have passion, and so sometimes it just, it's, it's a difference of opinions, but that's okay. And Councilmember Mason, I hope to see your success on this council, and I will say that the the best success will be really working together with the team. And I, and I believe that COVID really hindered the relationship with the council this year. You know, I think back to the last three years and, you know, the council city dinners and the the together, you know, just showing up to on site, we missed all that. We didn't have that opportunity really this year. And so I think that that creates just distance between everybody. And so for any part of my frustration in you or your frustration with me, I apologize. But I know that at the end of it, every single one of these council members do care. So team, there's a lot to be proud of. We've had very challenging times this past year. For me personally, I cannot give 110% when I'm so committed to a career and my family, my husband who recently retired, and for my own health. And people have said, your own health. I am so into this and I care, and I simply care about it. And so with that, I have to step back because I just can't give, you know, nine, 10 hours to a career and then try to turn around and do, you know, another 50 hours a week with the city council and really be fair to the residents of San Bruno. It takes a lot to be a council person. I don't know how anybody does it with a full-time job. And so be able to have a life again and be able to enjoy more of my family time would be so amazing. But I won't give up, and I won't not volunteer, and I won't not give back to this community. It's what I've done for the past 30-plus years, and I will always try to support and get involved in good causes. So to Javon, thank you so much. As a city manager, you have been a tremendous leader, and your dedication is just, your your passion, and you, and you lead an amazing team. And I know behind every great team is that assistant, Jennifer Dionis, who's, who's always there and somebody I can depend on, and I appreciate the the support that you've given because I know there's so much that you do behind the scenes. To Mark DeVrono, City Attorney, thank you for your advice and knowledge. You're truly the best, and you've never led us in the wrong direction. And to all the department heads, I know that you are so dedicated, you know, long days, long hours, and you are one for the best for San Bruno, and you have to listen to our questions and our re-questioning and repeated issues. And each of us, each of us, personal things we get involved with, but I thank you for the reports and your, your, your dedication to all of our quirks that we have. Thank you to my dedicated campaign team, from Chris Gonzalez to my, to Jessica, Christina with a C, Christina with a K, most importantly, my sister and her family. You guys are my rock. I love you so much. And to my family, I'm going to ask my son, my daughter, my husband to come over here and get into the camera. My family is really my rock. My husband has totally supported me through such a difficult time. My kids are following social media and they're trying to support me. And I, you know, I go from work to a council meeting with five minutes to put some food into my mouth, and my husband's got their, got the dinners prepared for me. So they have been there behind me, my son Ryan, my husband Jim, my daughter Sarah, and my son's girlfriend Vanessa, who's going to hide off camera, but they're my rock. And and my mom, who likes to join in and watch the meetings and listen to me, thank you from the bottom of my heart. We are very blessed, and so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. If I can ask all of the council members to come back and turn their cameras on, please?
Thanks, guys.
Are you out?
Thank you. And again, thank you, Councilmember, and we, we're not going to adjourn yet. We're going to actually conduct some business now. So.